Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, May 10. And we're beginning right at 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items? From any of the councillors? Councillor Montgomery, anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anything from Admin or Led Services?
Nothing from Administration, Your Worship, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm looking then for a motion councillor Lang made.
Thank you. I'd like to move that council adopt the May 10, 2023 Committee of the Whole Agenda as presented.
And now that that motion has been made, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion is carried. Thank you. This brings us to the confirmation of minutes, 4.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for April 12, 2023. Councillor Peterson.
Your Worship, I would move that council adopt the April 12, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented.
Thank you. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you councillor Montgomery. I jumped the gun a bit there, sorry. That brings us to item 5, Business, 5.1, Offsite Levy Annual Report Fiscal Year 2022. Ethan, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship and council. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief update on offsite levies. So in order to comply with the MGA and our own bylaw, an annual report must be given to council and to the public on offsite levies and how much we have collected, how much we have dispersed through projects and kind of where our balances are. So all of this was provided in your packages tonight, but to give you a brief overview, we collected approximately $134,000 in levies in 2022, and we also earned about $62,000 in interest. Expenditures last year totaled almost $750,000, and in total, the town holds about $4.5 million in levy funds. These are split up between water, sanitary, stormwater and roads. However, that is a combined number. So if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I will tell council though that we are planning to do a full encompassing offsite levy workshop learning session for all the current councillors, all the new councillors, anybody who wasn't here for that original bylaw. So happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Former Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I am glad to be the former deputy mayor. Ethan, in 2017, 2018, there were lots of changes made to the offsite levy provincial regulations, and they included things like being able to do offsite levy for additional public service provision like libraries and. So when you do the report to council, is that something that will be, or to whoever I guess would like to attend those information sessions, is that something that you'll be doing some greater information? I guess the reason, when you read the Alberta Muni report, which people have no life do read, it talks often about how other communities are leveraging this process and taking a very long view, like 30-year, 50-year views, where they're saying, we're going to build a municipal emergency centre in 25 years, and we're going to utilise offsite levies, 10% or 3% of the offsite levies to do this. So I'm hopeful that when you come to council with that bigger picture, that these are some of the things that we'll be able to hear about, about those other communities that have done that, like Pinoka, Laduke, that area.
So through the Chair to you councillor, absolutely. And not to get too far into details, but what we'd like to do is kind of give an overview of how our bylaw works today, how it's working in terms of what are we charging versus what could we be charging, as well as what other options are out there. So that's exactly what you're referring to.
I also noticed, Your Worship, and to Ethan, that some communities have also made considerations around tax assessment, and they've balanced that off through offsite levies. So especially when it comes to supporting service provision within community, and they've utilised that to build a sort of a more holistic framework for delivering services, I guess.
Absolutely councillor. And as council knows, when we went through that last bylaw, there was a lot of things about staying competitive in the development community, right? We don't want to have the highest rates in the area. We also don't want to have the lowest because then we're probably shortchanging ourselves. So it's finding that balance. We're always open to options that work while staying within the requirements of the MGA. So when we do provide that workshop, I'm happy to provide those information.
Thank you. Ethan, just a quick question, and maybe this is for CAO Scoble as well. Do you foresee us looking at a potential increase in offsite levies? Is that going to be part of your report when you come back with a full look at it?
Yeah. Sorry Kevin, if you want to go ahead.
Let's go. Go ahead Ethan, I think you can answer.
Yeah. So to You Worship, we want to outline for council, what do we charge today versus what could we potentially charge? For those of you who were here, when we passed the last bylaw, we didn't set a fee that matched what the report recommended we should. So we are charging less than what the professional study that was completed recommended us to charge. But that was a decision to stay competitive in the development market. So that's where we'll outline the difference between what we are collecting versus what we could be collecting, how that'll have an impact on our account balances, our future projects, and then that discussion can be had on, do we want to look at increasing our rates, or are we comfortable with where we're at?
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Mitzner.
Some of the offsite cost levies previously years ago were done like in five-year, 10-year terms. So do we still have some in effect that are generating income till a certain year before they fall off?
Sorry, if I can clarify, are you talking about levies that are not yet paid, or levies that are collected?
Yeah, like say your street was paved, and then so it's on till 2025. So how many projects or how many things do we have where there's still money being paid? And when is that date complete? Do we get a list? Is there a list of that?
Yes and no. So previously, we allowed for levies not to be paid until a house was built, right? And so a street could be built, the lots were developed, but each individual lot was responsible for the levies. It was kind of a way that was seen to allow development to occur without a lot of upfront costs. With this new bylaw, we've changed that to there's a portion due at signing a development agreement, there's a portion due at CCC, there's a portion due at FAC. So by the time that asset becomes the town's property, it's fully paid for, or all the levies are fully paid for. So it's a different approach. I think it's a happy medium between what you would see like in the city of Calgary versus what we used to have. But any area that was developed previous to this new bylaw still has outstanding lots. So I could bring a list of the quantity of lots and the approximate dollar value that's outstanding, I could bring that to that next meeting, absolutely.
But some of those will expire like in 25 or 20?
It does depend on the development agreement and the way it was written at the time it was signed. We do have some development agreements that are close to 30 years old, and they don't have an expiry date within them. So those ones, it's once the development happens is when the development agreement is either...
So for new developments coming in, we're not having 30-year amortisations anymore?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitzner. Councillor Lang made.
So my speaker's messed up again.
Sorry councillor Wiley.
Well, it was working last week, so I'm not sure what happened. No, it's that it puts me down as councillor Lang made. We're just going to get feedback if we do that. Anyway, I was just wondering, when do you think that would be brought before council?
I was targeting July.
Okay, that's excellent, thank you.
Any other questions for Ethan or CAO Scoble? Anything at home councillor Montgomery?
None from me, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ethan actually for the report, I appreciate it.
Thank you councillor Montgomery. Thank you Ethan. That brings us to 5.2, Alberta Municipalities Resolution Provincial Indigenous Awareness, Training and Support. Jonathan, you're speaking to this one?
Yes, Your Worship, thank you. So as council may know, the Alberta Municipalities conducts a resolution process that allows their board to advocate to both provincial and federal governments. Their resolutions, they require are submitted, need to be submitted by May 31 of this year, each year. So we have before you attached the agenda packet is council's ABMuni's resolution from last year, and we're just wondering if council would like to submit that resolution again to Alberta Municipalities, or if there's any changes or amendments that council would like to make. If council is agreeable with the resolution as presented, we'll bring it to next week's council meeting for council approval.
Thank you Jonathan. Councillor Peterson.
I think it would be worthwhile bringing back, but I guess there's a few things that we learned the hard way from how things can very easily go off the rails. So first of all, I think that before we do this, we need to have support from SICCA. We had support from them the last time through the education satellite of the committee, but those councillors that were on there are not there now. And so I think we would need some indication of support. I don't know if we could get that in time, but I think that's critical, it's a critical factor. And it's even more critical because the reason, one of the reason that the floodgates opened was that even though our mayor stated really clearly that this came forward as a joint resolution or as a joint proposal from our work in the Anti-Racism Committee, the first speaker talked about how not enough work had been done. You know, she just didn't have a clue, but it doesn't matter when you're on the mic, right? And so I think making sure that we cover that. The second thing is that in the first, it is therefore resolved that on page one of that resolution. One of the things that came up in that conversation that was maybe, that had legitimacy, I thought, was the concern that children in schools could be exposed to traumatic stories, no matter how true or how real, that it wasn't really good for kids to be exposed to that. But the real purpose of this was to, I think, provide educators with that opportunity to, that schools are this huge disseminator of information, and they have already Aboriginal studies as part of their curriculum. But as anyone knows who's worked within the system, what they don't have is funding to access the consultants, and those consultants are elders, lived experience, people with lived experience. And so I would suggest, if people want to go ahead with this, I would suggest that in that first line, that it would read Alberta Municipalities advocate for the government of Alberta to provide financial support to every school jurisdiction to enable educators, including homeschool educators, to learn about the lived experiences directly from Indigenous elders and knowledge keepers. And then I would also say that normally we capitalise knowledge keepers and elders, but that's just a small thing. And those are my suggestions.
Thank you councillor Peterson. I would like to continue on and do this again in September. I don't want to, to be honest, I didn't feel that we were listened to carefully, that conclusions were made before they really paid attention to what was there in front of them. And then you had someone who spoke strongly and really demonstrated a naivety and lack of understanding of what we were trying to achieve. We had some people thinking that we wanted to get into the education system and be a part of the teaching. It was just a matter of lobbying the provincial government for funding so that schools could offer education and things like that in their school. So I'd like to see us do this again. And if council supports this Jonathan, I'd love to sit down with comms and you. And when we do write up something that we're going to say, I'd like to be, I'd like there to be a focus on how long and how involved Strathmore has been with SICCA. So they understand that when they say, oh, I've been working with First Nations for a year, we can demonstrate that we've been doing this for a long time and our hearts are in the right place.
Sorry Worship, maybe in those conversations, that would be the ideal place to have someone like Ruben Breaker, because he, councillor Ruben Breaker, because he was in the original, the initial discussions that we had in the two councils ago, three councils ago maybe when we started this work, he was involved quite heavily in that, and so that might also be useful.
So Jonathan, do you have a sense of where... councillor Montgomery? And then councillor Wiley.
Thank you very much. One of the, I guess, I don't want to call it a concern necessarily, but just people who spoke against the motion last time, one of the things that came up a couple of times was just that they didn't feel that it was, I don't know if I would say appropriate necessarily, but almost like it wasn't kind of in line with the purview of AMA to be trying to insert things into the curriculum essentially, the school curriculum. And so I'm just wondering, should like something like that come up again? I think that there should be some sort of response that indicates how this is in line with the purview of what we're supposed to be doing. Thank you.
That's a really good point councillor Montgomery, much appreciated. Councillor Wiley.
I was just going to state that I think it's redundant. The school boards have already freed up cash to bring in elders. I just think it's probably an outdated, like every school board has money they've set aside now for Indigenous training and awareness, and I think it's probably an outdated motion.
If I might speak to that, Your Worship. So in the last several years, I consulted with the CRC, with the Learning Network out of Red Deer, and with the AARPDC out of Edmonton. So those are the three major professional development consortiums. And so in that work, there is, a lot of the work that they do is around delivering services to schools who want training in a variety of things. But one of their, one of their focus is Indigenous awareness, training and support. And so what we hear from, and so their entry into that space is cursory. So very often, it's sort of the first step into that space, and then schools do manifest a broader perspective. So I think it is, it needs to be understood that no school board would be required to do this, that it would not be a requirement. But I can tell you that I have not consulted now for seven months, and I get multiple calls a week from schools begging for Indigenous elder involvement. So I know that schools have this, but what I don't see in schools is money set aside for elder training to come in, for these people with lived experiences to come in and do the training that is necessary around the condition set into the TRC. And if this money was readily available, if these services were readily available, people would not be calling me begging for resources to bring elders in. And that's why they're calling me, because that was my role. And so, and when schools tell me repeatedly, and so 17 schools in the southern part of the province, in the last month and a half alone, calling for support because they don't have funding to bring elders into their schools to do the kind of work that is directed under the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. So some school boards, I believe maybe are executing differently, but that is my experience.
Thank you councillor Peterson. So Jonathan, you'll come back to us this, and then rather than debate and discuss now, this could come to us for a motion on whether we want to bring this to AMA or Alberta Municipalities?
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll do our best to bring it to next week's council meeting for council's consideration.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions for our good friend Jonathan? Thank you Jonathan. We move now to 5.3, Council Procedure Bylaw, number 23-17, page 21. Chris, are you speaking on this one? Oops.
Good evening. So after the last Committee of the Whole and the discussion on this, administration took this bylaw away and tried to make a lot of those changes that you requested. So I thought perhaps the best way to go about this would be just to go through the items. If there's any discussion, we can have it at that point, and then you can give us feedback and direction. So. Okay, so the first item had to do with the deputy mayor rotation, and so we changed that to be that a councillor may serve a term as deputy mayor, but they may also decline. If they decline it, then council will appoint a member to serve it by resolution. And just the reason that instead of spreading it across is somebody may decline into the term, and that may make a challenge trying to split it across later on.
Any comments on the first one? Okay, next one Chris?
Yes, so the next one is item 6, or section 6.2. There were some comments about wanting a little bit more direction around educational sessions. So some direction has been provided, and then if there was an educational session that would require extra funds to be added to the budget, then a motion of council would be required to do that.
Councillor Peterson.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, that seems to be good Chris, next one.
This should be another easy one, 10.5. We got rid of the requirement to make that statement, but still just ensuring that everybody is alone for that section.
Thank you. Anything on that one? 13.5?
Yes, 13.5. So this item, we took the language from the Boards and Committees bylaw to try to clarify this a little bit. Is there a comment on this?
On the next one, the previous one? Yeah.
Sorry, on which one?
On the 13.5 previous.
Okay, yeah, you bet.
Yeah. I just have to point out, Your Worship, what it says in our notes. It says, "This has been removed because it wasn't being followed." I think that's a really dangerous precedent for a council.
To put in.
No, isn't that great? Like if we don't follow it, we don't have to do it. You know, it might not be the best process going forward. I think it could say, "We've found a better way to move forward." Just saying.
So, sorry, I just want to clarify councillor Peterson, are you saying that we want to make sure that reports are given to mayor and council?
No, Your Worship.
Are being advised?
No, Your Worship, I'm just saying that we shouldn't throw out policies just because we don't want to follow them, nothing more than that.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was reading too much into what you're... Yeah. All right, thank you. 13.6.
There were some comments also about the Boards and Committees and how to report on it. The consensus that we understood was quarterly updates seemed to be the, seemed to be, to make the most sense, as well as when an urgent matter may arise. And then also kind of in conjunction with that, we have the 13.7 that would also talk about, on an annual basis, having somebody from the board, either the board or representative come, or say when there is a larger financial decision, sometime in that process, bringing them in to discuss that.
Councillor Peterson?
So, Your Worship, first of all, on 13.6, I think that it's reasonable, because there's nothing compelling, and maybe it's from being a teacher and administrator for so long, but there's nothing compelling anybody to do a report in 13.6. It says, "You shall keep rest of the council informed of actions," but it doesn't give any timeline or how many, so we know, as Chris just said, that it should be quarterly, at least, written quarterly reports or updates when urgent matters arise. I don't think it hurts council members to submit reports from every meeting. You know, the minutes of the meetings should be just submitted. People can choose to read them or not, but that's where I do most of my learning. So when councillor Montgomery submits a report from Community Futures, that's how I know what the work of Community Futures is. I think that's what educates councillors, and it doesn't take up council time to report, it's just he's included it, it's there. So whatever, even if a councillor can't attend a meeting, we can always ensure that the minutes find its way into our reports.
So would you, are you thinking then, rather than saying...
No, I like this. I like this. I like it exactly how it is, but I think the other thing is that, you know, that all minutes from committees on which councillors sit shall be submitted to council. Because that not only, that not only gives all councillors an opportunity to gain awareness, it becomes a public document so that the public also is able to see what we do, what the work of the committees are, and what's happening within the broader community. And I think that they will go where they have interest.
So councillor Peterson, do you want another statement saying monthly minutes should be added?
Well, I'd just say that meeting minutes from committees will be submitted for inclusion in the minutes, or whatever, in the agendas, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wiley, did you want to weigh in on that as well?
Hi, that's me.
I thought I had it right. Councillor Lang made.
Thank you very much. I'm just looking for a question, maybe a bit of clarification here. I also agree that it's, it is, sharing committee reports is an excellent opportunity for learning for all members on council, including members of the community, but I also do recognise that there are some members of council that tend to have a heavier committee load than others. And I just want some clarification, if I could councillor Peterson, are you specifically asking that the minutes be submitted monthly as the meeting happens, or that we could include the minutes, say for three months in a row, in that quarterly package and report?
I would prefer them to come, so for instance, in committees where I've sat on, which sort of covers most of the gamut of the committees around this table, the executive directors or CAOs of those various committees will, you know, so Vicky Cook will always submit the minutes, you know, just as a matter of course, if I asked her to. I don't, because Richard provides extensive committee reports every month. When I was on Marigold, they just submitted their quarterly meeting minutes as a part of the agendas. They just submitted them on my behalf. They were just submitted to Legislative Services. Wadamsa will do the same thing, they'll just submit their minutes if you want them to, or you can do the reports like we've been doing monthly. So I think councils, councillors have a choice, you know, they could report, or they can just submit the minutes. You know, Jason's been just submitting the minutes every month, and I've found it really useful, but I think, you know, it really provides both the councillors and the public. To me, I don't want a three-month lie, I don't want to read a quarter's worth of minutes in one shot, but reading it as a part of the ebb and flow of a council's work in the course of a term, you know, over three meetings in a month, seems to me to be more reasonable.
Okay, thank you. I suppose I'm just a little confused, because I don't see that as what's being written here. And I want to, this one was important to me because I want to make sure that I'm meeting the needs of council, and that I submit reports in a timely manner and in a manner that council needs. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what my requirements will be. And will that be a quarterly update with minutes, or will that be monthly meeting minutes? With the way this is written, it's my understanding that a quarterly report with three months' worth of minutes would be appropriate, with how it's currently written. So I'm not sure I have more clarity on this one.
Maybe this whole quarterly update thing, to which they are appointed by council by providing written quarterly updates, you know, to me, it's redundant for the councillors to do... to do written quarterly updates when you have the minutes. Updates when urgent matters arise, I think that's critical, that goes without saying what that is. To me, this 13.6 is all about the dissemination of information. And maybe it's not just to the rest of council, it's just, you know, due diligence, and, because it forms a part of our public record.
So, Chris, these become suggestions that will come to us again for us to vote on, and a counselor could say, "Well, I have problems with this sentence in 13.6."
Yes, that's correct. It may take longer than to pass the bylaw, because we will have to get it back to you as well.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if, I'm just wondering if Counselor Peterson would rather see provide written monthly reports or written monthly updates, and then we decide whether.
I don't want to see written updates, I want to see the minutes of the meetings.
Okay, so then we can add that sentence where you wanted written monthly minutes.
No, I want to see the minutes.
Why am I not understanding you tonight?
Here, can I, can I try?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I think the consensus that I'm hearing is that we can remove the new sentence in 13.6 and just replace it with the minutes.
Counselor Mitzner.
So we're just gonna change it to, "Committees will provide minutes, and then only quarterly updates when urgent matters arise," right?
Or, or not, take out the written quarterly. Sorry.
Yeah, right, just take out the quarterly, just when urgent matters arise.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Great, I feel a little less confused. I hope, Counselor Langmae, do you feel a little less confused?
I feel less confused, but more concerned.
Okay.
So, the, the concern I have here with just submitting the minutes is that I know in my meetings, there can sometimes be information that's shared at the meetings that's not necessarily captured the most clearly in the minutes. The minutes clearly capture decisions made, but not necessarily the outcomes of the work that's going on, or maybe some of the challenges, or the larger picture that's behind the discussions that are happening at those, at those committee meetings. And for me, when I see a written quarterly update, what that meant to me was that I'm providing that, that larger scope, the, you know, updates on the operation, discussions that are happening, that may not necessarily be reflected directly within the minutes. Maybe, maybe I'm offering to, maybe I'm offering to go too far, maybe, maybe the minutes are all that's needed, and, and council just wants to see decisions that are made. But, but for me, I was actually really quite excited about providing more updates about the work that's being done, not necessarily just the decisions made. But it sounds like I might be in the, in the minority on that one, and, and I'd be okay with that, too.
Counselor Peterson.
I think that anytime a counselor has something that is, that is, that they need to communicate, I think you can do it in the, in the, in every meeting, right? There's opportunity to do it in every meeting. And, you know, lots of times, you'll see Counselor Wagner pull something out of, you know, that emergency management, or, or something out of Wheatland Housing that is specific, you know, he, he's presented these very, very detailed reports, but it'll just be one thing that he'll pull out, which is speaking to what you're saying, you know, because the minutes don't capture it. So I think there's always opportunity to do that, and I think it's smart, and it's a good thing to do, always. But I don't think this disallows that.
Chris, would you be able to read back what you might have for wording on this, so that we can make it as clean as possible, so when it comes to council for a decision, it'll be efficient? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No worries, hopefully this reads all right. "Appointed counselors shall keep the rest of council informed of the actions of committees or bores to which they are appointed by council by providing meeting minutes, or reports, or updates when urgent matters arise." I'll have to do some wordsmithing, but something along those lines.
Counselor Langmae.
I'm so sorry to speak on this so many times. The follow, the worry I have with that wording, when I brought this up as a concern, is that I wanted a timeframe of how often those needed to come. I, you know, I had an idea that I was supposed to submit a report or some minutes, but I didn't have a frequency, and, and how often that should be happening. So I, I was hoping that the edit we would see, I liked that there was a frequency included, a quarterly, or something like that, even if it says monthly, or after every meeting, or something, just a frequency, so that I know that I am meeting the expectations.
But doesn't minutes speak to that? Because your minutes are based on a timeliness, right?
Your minutes can be based on, your worship, if I may, if I may. So your minutes, it doesn't clarify whether, you just want meetings, minutes after, what I, what I'm hearing is you want minutes after every meeting.
Yep.
So are you okay?
I want to know what's going on.
So are you okay with those minutes being delayed by a month until they're approved by the committee?
Yes, ours are, ours are.
Okay.
There's always a month lag.
Okay.
But there, but there's a rhythm, too. And then that's why counselors, that's why we need that updates, to provide updates when urgent matters arise, and I think updates when urgent or important matters arise, you know, I think that it's not just urgent.
Okay, thank you.
Is everyone comfortable with that wording, then? Okay, Chris, you can move on.
Okay, so the next one is 13.8. There was some discussion about understanding the difference of roles between town council and boards and committees. Part of that discussion, of course, was, you know, this type of issue is also dealt with by the code of conduct, but we also added some language here to try to just, you know, emphasize it once again, that counselors have fiduciary responsibilities, both as members of town council and as representatives of the boards and committees that they serve on.
Sorry, Chris, are you doing 13.8 or 13.7?
Sorry, I was going to 13.8, but I guess.
Okay, well, let's just see if that one sounds.
I mentioned 13.7 before, but any comments for either of those would be great.
Are there any questions or comments on those? Counselor Peterson.
That's a good thing. In terms of, in terms of 13.7, where we talk about, the boards will arrange to have the committee or board, or a representative from the committee or board, update council on an annual basis. The best template for that, I think, is Marigold. They do it as a matter, of course, they show up at 43 municipalities and, and do that. I don't know if there's a better way that we could do this, just to ensure, I don't know, I'm gonna forget to have Wadamsa come before here, or, or, or Wheatland Housing come before us. So maybe, you know, is there something that we could institute into this that, that, where there are boards, where we, where there's a significant investment, you know, or, or I don't know if it only should be tied to money, because, you know, maybe that's pretty narrow, but where we would just automatically ask them throughout the year, like, we would, we would, you know, Marigold comes at a certain time every year, and we'd ask the CEO of Wadamsa to come before the board, or the CEO of Wheatland Housing, and, and we would sort of spread it out in some kind of a timeline, you know, that you would have. I don't know what other people think, but just so that it would carry through.
I guess you could have, starting in January, you could have, like, each, you know, each month, or each, Jonathan.
Sorry, worship and council, I think that's a good point. Well, what we could do if council approves this amendment is our team will work with the different boards and see what timeline works, makes sense with their fiscal year and everything like that, too, so they come at a, a reasonable timeframe.
That sounds good. Counselor Langmae.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if this would be in addition to the committees that already come to present at the October committee funding meeting that's as part of the budget preparations? So would, would they need to come twice to report to us, or if they come to that October meeting, would that count as the meeting that they come to?
Thank you, worship and council, I think that'd be up to council. Last year, we did have those boards come twice to do their update, and then also come to the community night, because that's a, a request for funding for the next year. So we kind of, in our minds, kind of had them separated between, as different kind of updates, but that could be up to council.
Okay, I'm just thinking there might be an opportunity there, if they're coming to ask for funding, it would be a good opportunity for them to outline what's happened in the past year as well, with the funding that they were provided previously. So there might, might be an opportunity to kill two birds with one stone with some of these committees, is just the idea I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Langmae. Counselor Wiley.
So weird, right? So perhaps then, when Jonathan's team is contacting the boards, they could leave it up to them to decide. So for example, when the municipal library came out in October, they also did an annual update, where they went through, you know, the services the library's providing. So then, wouldn't that be something that, when you're reaching out, they would say, "Well, we already come in October," and then it would just work out?
Thank you, worship and council, I think that, yeah, that's a great point. We can, we can work that out with those boards and committees. I think the one thing that we'll try and keep in mind, too, is that community delegation night could be a lengthy meeting with a lot of different groups coming in, so we'll try and keep that in mind, too, when we're, when we're scheduling that out.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley, and thank you, Jonathan. So we can go on to the next one. 14.6.
Okay, is everyone happy with 13.8?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, 14.6, this is just a small, oh, I think I see a comment. I don't know if you can see it, but I can see it, Counselor Montgomery.
Thank you, Chris. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you very much. So, just with regards to 13.8, I was wondering if administration has any comment about whether there are some boards that we should not have council representation on, like, where possible? And the reason for that is because, you know, as, as we all know, we're, we're duty-bound to, you know, act in the best interest of the committee or board, and then we're duty-bound to act in the best interest of, of the council, which are sometimes two separate or opposing kind of decisions, I guess you could say. And, so for that reason, I guess, like, just for the, kind of the clarity of, of, like, the, not, like, not having conflict, you know, or avoiding conflict like that, and even just to strengthen, you know, let's say, the, the review of some decisions, you know, it would, it would almost be more beneficial to have, you know, let's say, like, you know, seven people looking hard at a decision, you know, because they're, they're detached from it, rather than having, you know, say, five or six people taking a, an objective, unbiased look at it, and then, you know, if you have one or two people that are on a committee, they're, they're kind of invested, right? So I, I know there are some boards that we have people on that you don't necessarily need to have council representation on, and so I, I am just curious to know what administration's thoughts are on, on that.
Counselor Scoville? CAO Scoville?
Well, I mean, the, obviously, you know, the less committees, the less opportunity for, for this, these type of things to happen, right? So, you know, if you don't, if we don't need to be on a committee, then, then there's a lot of pros to not being on that committee. In some situations, it's, it's, you know, it's, you know, unavoidable, so to speak. So, you know, the, the advice we've given still stands. When, when you're sitting at the board table, you, you have your board hat on, and, and you're making decisions in the best interest of, of the board. And when you come to council, you have your, your counselor or your mayor hat on, and you're basing your decision on what you think is best for the, the town of Strathmore.
I think there, thank you for that, CAO Scoville. I think definitely we should look at some of these committees and boards with the advice of whether we should be on them or not, and it comes down to the same thing that Counselor Montgomery was saying, and I can give you my experience. I was, I was a counselor on the youth club board, and the budget and the, the ask from the youth club board kept growing every year, and so as a board member, I was, you know, I was fully supportive of that, and I was, you become invested, as Counselor Montgomery said. And then I was reassured by the administration that it'd be all right, funds would be there, and not, not to worry. And then I would be on council, and questions would be asked of me, and rightfully so, as to why the, why the budget is going up each year. So it, it does, you can be on a board, and it can put you in a really bad spot, and I, I felt that way on the youth club board, that I, that I became in a position that became untenable. Good word, good word. Counselor Peterson?
So I, I really hear what, what Counselor Montgomery's saying, and I think that there, there's two definitive roles, you know, what, exactly what CAO Scoville mentioned. And I came away from our session on governance with a much keener idea around this as well. I, I think that he articulated it so, so clearly. And one of the things that I appreciated about Gord, and he, I forget his last name, in, in his presentation to us, is that whole idea that sitting on committees, especially ones with ministerial mandates, both protect the integrity of the community that is participating and present challenges to that committee. So having said that, I also understand why this provincial government, this current government, is, has made a lot of steps towards what they call competency-based frameworks in terms of appointments to ministerial boards. And, and so it'll be interesting to see what the future brings, because I don't think it will matter which government sits in the legislature in Edmonton. I believe that this is something that is coming to us, and that competency frameworks will be the necessary condition by which individuals are appointed to boards. And so this was, this was a huge contentious issue in the Asha community, that, you know, that people were really, municipal government people particularly, felt that there was a, a loss of autonomy around this. And, and there was lots of talk about, you know, things that had happened in the past, where they thought appointments to boards that were, you know, supposed to be competency-based frameworks became rewards for, for party favors, you know, for, for partisanship. But I can tell you, in my experience, and I'd like to hear Counselor Wagner's ideas around it, too, our board, our Wheatland Housing Management Body Board, the Governance Board, is, I think, the first one, if not the only one at this point, that has delved heavily into this competency-based framework, because of the positives that we see in it. And so we've undergone intense work around identifying a competency-based framework for the entity called the Wheatland Housing Management Body Board. So regardless of whether any of us should be the people who sat there, we've talked about what that takes, what, what would it look like? And so Counselor Montgomery is exactly right in saying that. This is something that, that is going to, under, that, that needs scrutiny, but I believe that the scrutiny is probably going to be a top-down one. But so far, my experience in this has been really positive, and I, and I commend this government for the work that they've done in it. I think that it's a useful exercise for any mandated board that's spending taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. If I can circle back, Counselor Montgomery, are you, you're, you're basically just looking for some potential advice as to which boards counselors may not necessarily have to be on or should not be on? Is that, you're looking for some guidance?
Sorry. I was just curious to get, like, I guess, administration's perspective on just our current kind of roster of boards even, and, and even, you know, I, I love hearing, you know, council's perspective as well on this. You know, I'll even just, with my, with Community Futures, for example, we, we actually just, you know, we, we were hard-pressed, for whatever reason, to get a representative from Chestamere Council to attend, and so we, we've now actually decided to get somebody from the Chestamere public to, to actually represent Chestamere. So, and it just kind of made me realize, you know, I was kind of surprised, I guess, at, you know, the, the idea that, that even that board, you know, we didn't necessarily have to have a, a council member on. So I just was kind of thinking about what other boards do we have that, you know, don't necessarily need a counselor on, and, and what are the effects of, of that, you know, as far as? a counselor on? And and what are the effects of of that, you know, as far as from a fiduciary duty kind of perspective? So, thank you, though.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. And I think in the last probably three terms, we've slowly whittled down the numbers of committees and boards, because there used to be so many that we were all a part of. And sometimes you would have four boards you were on, and it was, it became unwieldy. And I think Counselor Counselor Mitzner was a big part of saying that, too, that we needed to really look at what boards and committees needed us on. So is everyone okay to move on to the next one? Okay, Chris? Counselor Peter, oh, Counselor Langmead?
Thank you. If I could just add one comment, you know, I think it is a good exercise to make sure that the boards that we're on are are boards that require a counselor. But I before, I would also like to include in that discussion, what does that mean for the information sharing? So if we, you know, right now, in the previous part of this document, we're talking about the importance of education, how important it is that we hear from our committees, because it's a learning opportunity. So how can we continue to have that learning opportunity to hear from these different committees that may or may not have council representation in the future if there isn't a counselor on it? So how can we continue to have that that flow of information coming to councils that we, you know, are aware of all the amazing things that are happening in our community and all the work these committees and boards are doing without maybe necessarily needing to sit on them? I don't have an answer for that. It's I but I just a question to pose and something for us to maybe consider as these conversations carry on into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Langmead.
Okay, so 14.6, this one is just a addition of language to add the same language as with regular council meetings. That's how it's been treated so far, just because we have regularly scheduled committee of the whole meetings. So this was just to fill that gap and to make it extra clear.
Any questions or comments for Chris on this one? Seeing none, we can carry on.
Okay, so 18.1, this is more of a discussion piece. Just, you know, over the past number of meetings, there have been a number of them that have gone past 10:00 PM. Sometimes that's been a challenge, just to, you know, come out of camera, make a motion to extend the council meeting, and then to go back. So we just wanted to bring this forward to see what council's opinion is on changing this or or not leaving it the way it is. Is this valuable? So just whatever you think we'd love to to hear.
Counselor Wiley?
Maybe it should say council meeting shall never adjourn before 10:00 PM, and then we wouldn't have that problem.
That's frightening. Counselor Wagner?
I do like the way it's written. 10:30, 11 o'clock for me is it's getting late. If we can't hash it out by 10 o'clock, carry it on to the next meeting is my thought.
Yeah, I agree. I think sometimes you can be forced into making decisions when you're getting pretty tired. And I know some people, I'm different because I'm a part-time mayor, but some of you have full-time jobs and and staff, too. It's it can be very long. Counselor Langmead?
I guess I just wonder, I hear what you're both saying, 10 o'clock is quite late, and it's past the time that I prefer to be in my pajamas. But I also note that I'm not sure that we've ever declined to extend a meeting. I think we've always, if my memory serves, we have always unanimously approved to extend the meeting. So I'm just wondering if we need to change our approach as a council, because I'm hearing what you're saying, but it's not, you know, we don't generally say no.
Counselor Wagner?
I vote in favor because everybody else is. And again, I'm I'm going to lose that vote anyway. So I, again, 10, 10 o'clock for me is the limit.
I'm in favor of that wording, too. Okay, anything else? Okay, next one, 20.3A.
Yes, 20.3A. This was because of a comment by Counselor Peterson requesting that we move that one section from the bottom up to here. So we just added the same language and just adjusted it so that it fits this the section. And also fixed the the to say His Majesty the King.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next one is 31.4. So this item was added basically to provide some clarity around how counselors can make motions to have items added to the agenda. This is also connected to the to the chart that will be, you know, if council approves it, will be added as another schedule to it, just to provide some more clarity on how items can be added to the agenda by by counselors.
Questions or comments for Chris on this? Okay, Jonathan?
Thank you, Worship. Just to follow up to what Chris said, later on in the agenda packet, you'll see a flow chart. That flow chart, we're probably going to do some amendments on, just to clean up a little bit, just to clarify some things, but it is related to this section as well. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Okay, next one.
I believe that's it. The rest of the changes are just clerical. And yes, and then there's that chart there, as we mentioned before.
Thank you, Chris. So we move now to 5.4, 2024 capital and operating budget timelines, page 56. Leanna and Tom, you're presenting? Or Leanna is taking the limelight right now?
I'm going to take the limelight for now, because he gets to talk on the next item.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So as we were so impressed with how our 2023 budget process went, we've basically mirrored the same process, updated the timelines. The one thing that we did add within the timelines is ensuring that we had the citizens' budget cafes to ensuring that citizens had an opportunity to talk to council after we've already presented the overall budget, giving you all some time to have some conversations with our residents and invite them to come and talk to you directly within council chambers. These are going to meet administration's timelines to ensure that we have our 2024 budget approved by December. And so we will start 2024 with our operating and capital budget.
Thank you. Questions for Leanna? Just want to assure council that when we do have that budget cafe, just to reassure you, I have a panic button here under my desk. So if things get a little dicey, we're okay. Any questions? Counselor Langmead?
Thank you. I just have one question, and that's regarding line 13, council requests submitted to administration for consideration and budget. I see that those would be due Friday, August 18. That seems like it might be, I'm going off memory here, so forgive me. It seems like that timeline might have moved back a little bit so that we're asked to do those a little bit earlier this year. Is that true?
That is correct. What we're doing is trying to give you some information ahead of schedule, so you can come back and ask administration. So then we can ensure that anything that you have brought within the budget information requests, and maybe we have already going to incorporate this within to the budget presentation for the year, instead of all of a sudden this being a special request and more tweaking within the budget timelines, to ensure that we can get this finalized.
And just a follow-up question, if I might. So at that point, we won't see what is in the what is proposed for the budget yet.
Not.
So we might end up requesting something that might be slightly related to something in the budget or that already exists.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that.
Thank you, Counselor Langmead. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Leanna. We move now to 2023 municipal taxation revenue. Tom? Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a bit of a continuation from the tax or the property tax rate bylaw discussions from last Wednesday, regular council meeting. So we brought for council today a bit more, or probably the similar information to what we presented at the council meeting last week regarding the, I guess, the municipal dollars that we have available, keeping the tax rate at the 4.7%. And and with the school levy being approximately 198,000 less than what we had budgeted, those dollars are available, if we still want to stay at the 4.7% to put back into maybe programs and services, to put into reserves, possibly a tax reduction. So I think there's a number of items that are council's going to speak to today that may require funding. And I think there's other maybe challenges that we have with some of our reserve balances. I think that was something that had been mentioned at the last meeting. What is that perfect, I guess, mix of debt, reserve, taxes, everything? How does that come into play? One thing that I think Counselor Wiley asked at the last meeting, or maybe it was Counselor Montgomery, I can't remember, was just about how many dollars that we are putting in reserves on an annual basis. So I kind of wanted to maybe just, Chris, I think there was just a chart I had that we can put up on the screen that just kind of indicates what we're putting into reserves for 2023, the current budget. So are you able to slide that up a bit, Chris? Okay. Is that? Just up now, up a bit, or yeah, that way. So for 2023, we have about 1.2 million dollars going into reserves, 100,000 in the budget going into the financial stabilization reserve. We've got that about 1.1 going into capital reserves. You can see there, there's stormwater, sanitary sewer. We got two sanitary sewer, one is connected to utility rates, one is the amount that we put from the budget. We have some joint use agreements with Wheatland County and with the Golden Hill School District to put funds into the civic center and sports center. We have the one-time item from this past year for the outdoor fitness equipment of $5,000. And then we've got some general revenue going in there, just dollars that are coming from our budget into the general capital reserve. So that's available for any sort of things other than water, stormwater, and sanitary sewer. So we have about 1.2 million dollars going to reserves on an annual basis. So just to provide some clarity from the last meeting. And I just have one other little chart, if you're able to slide down, Chris, just a bit of a breakdown of where our reserves are sitting right now. And this is not showing the off-site levies that Ethan just talked about, since those are typically tied to certain projects. So our beginning balance for our reserves at the beginning of this year is 6.8 million dollars. And that also that includes 3.2 that we just put into reserves. So prior to that transfer from a few weeks ago, our balance would have been about 3.6 million. You can see the 1.2 million coming in the reserves for this year that we just saw above there. And then based on our current budget for the year, what's coming out of the budget. So we're kind of starting off the year with about 6.8 million, and we'll probably be in that range, depending on where projects come out of for the year. So I thought I'd just kind of show a bit of a high level on that. It doesn't paint the the full picture, but at least gives you where we're at and what we're putting in the reserves at this time. So so I guess a few different options that we put before council is, again, putting the money into capital reserves, identifying that we do have some needs, as we're going to probably see in the 2024 budget. I know Ethan's got a 10-year capital plan, looking at reservoirs, other core critical infrastructure that we have coming down the road. We have a second option there, putting the money in financial stabilization. That way, council has flexibility on where they want to put those dollars. And then also combination of maybe a tax reduction and putting some in reserves, and then also a tax reduction. I think, again, Counselor Wiley hit it right on with the 198,000. That's equal to almost bang on to 1%. And then, as I said, you've got some other considerations to discuss on other programs and projects that are coming up. So you have quite a number of options and directions that you could go on this. So kind of giving you some information that you can then have some discussion on, so.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom? Seeing none, thank you for your report. And that brings us to 5.6, 2023 budget items, snow dump. Hi, Ethan.
Hello. Hello again, your worship and council. Bit of a brief, I'll call it notification, let you know how things are going, sort of update for you guys. So our snow dump, currently the town owns four quarters of land in the southeast corner of town. Three of those quarters, approximately, are leased to the solar farm, and we use the remaining quarter for many purposes. But in the winter, a lot of times, that is where the snow from the roads are hauled and left to melt in the spring. For many years, that has worked. We've been able to, you know, allow the snow to melt. It saturates into the ground and evaporates and everything as well. However, this past spring, we had a very rapid melt, to the point where snow was melting extremely fast and water was starting to move off the property. So we had to contain that. And so it's raised a lot of questions in terms of, you know, are the old practices the right practices? And we feel that having a more formalized snow dump is the way forward. And so we've come up with some initial plans on what to do. It's it involves some burming. It involves an application to AEP to ensure that they approve of it. But there also are some costs to come with that. So we are still working on what the exact cost would be. And I think once we know those, and whether we are confident whether it fits into an existing budget or whether we need to come to council with a new budget, we will, we will do that. But we wanted to provide this update. Director Doug Dale or or CAO Scobal may want to add more, but that's what I wanted to give you guys tonight.
Thank you, Ethan. Questions for Ethan or CAO Scobal? Seeing none, thank you very much. That brings us to item six, the question and answer period. Any burning questions tonight? Nothing at home, Counselor Montgomery?
Not, sorry, not at this time, no, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wiley?
My question, I would go back to item 5.5, municipal taxation revenue. I was wondering if administration will be coming forward with a recommendation then next week, since council didn't seem to give any feedback on that.
Through the chair, yeah. I mean, by by default, we'll we'll make a recommendation. I mean, I guess I would caution council members that the recommendation we make will always be what administration thinks is the best administrative recommendation. That doesn't, you know, we don't apply the political lens, which is the purview of council. So just, I guess I'm just putting it out there that we'll make a recommendation, but whether you agree with it or not, you'll make the decision that you think is best for the community.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered how that would go.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. I don't think there are any other questions. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go in camera. Counsel Peterson?
Worship, I would move that we go in camera at 7:11.
Thank you. All in favor?
I didn't say on what.
Hi.
Thank you. And we're going in camera.
Do I need to know what, your worship?
Oh, yes. Sorry, we have to read what they are. My fault.
That's okay. So I move that council-